I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Contract 2002-09, electrical underground material.
It is our vertical consultant and our public works superintendent's recommendation that you accept the bid, the lowest bid, and that from Irving.
What?
Irving. Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Are we accepting all six items, Deb?
No, not all. There's a couple of items in there that are cheaper from another source, and we're going to take them, and we're going to split it. Because we do have that right, it says that in our bid.
Is that one on one that we need to do this evening?
No, we don't have to on the other ones. As long as this one contract covers everything, we're just going to split. You know what I'm saying? On the numbers, bring the numbers down. Instead of, instead of, I would go down to about $117,000. It's $117,000, so we're going to save another $2,000 or $3,000 by, it's only two items. It's glue and 9,000 feet of wire, number eight wire.
Okay, so that's, that's good item number six.
Yeah.
Okay, so cross out six.
Well, they won't be in, they won't be in that number. They'll be on the bid, but they won't be in that number six.
So the motion needs to be for 105, is that correct?
Yeah.
105. Okay, so the glue you're going to get from Park Services.
Yeah.
Because they're the lowest.
Yeah, there was just a couple of things.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by you. You say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Comments from the public at this time? If there are no comments from the public, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting again. Okay, minutes of the regular meeting, November 18th. You all have copies. Is there any additions or deletions?
Actually, I have, I have one change. On the third page in, six paragraph down, where it begins, "Pro Street Huck were reported." It's the sentence, basically, he would like a written contract. Do you see where I mean that?
Yes.
Okay. I think it's not that he would like a written contract, he was offering to provide us with a written contract. He would like to provide the services, and we'll provide a written contract.
Any other discussion? Any motion?
Motion that we approve the minutes as amended?
I'll second, Deb.
Seconded. All those in favor, vote by you. You say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills, you all, you all have a copy of the bills. Is there any additions or deletions? No, there is not.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
I have a question, yeah. On the very last page of the surveying account, I was just curious as to why we surveyed the Dupree property.
Well, because we sold it.
We had to say we had to sell it, because we split the property, we split the piece, so we had to have it surveyed.
We had to, we were required to.
Oh, yes, you had to. We only sold him part of it, so we had to, had to survey.
Okay.
They started working on it, it looks like May or yesterday.
And, and the rest were just, what was the purpose of the rest for survey? I know for the Rattlee Park, obviously, because we had purchased, correct? Second with the D and H?
Substation's same way, Water Tank's same way, give us our boundary markers.
Okay.
Uh, the E and H station, same way, boundary markers. They're all laid out. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by you. You say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
The first piece of correspondence you have is from the New York State Department of Transportation that is addressed to the mayor. I have forwarded your letter regarding your request for no parking at the corner of Pratt Street in Manor Drive to the Traffic Engineering Office in Water Town. Traffic Engineering Office will determine if no parking signs are appropriate at this location, and if so, will issue an order for their placement. This is from Tom McCross, the Assistant Resident Engineer at Platteburg. Second piece of correspondence you have is from Montgomery Hotel and Ladders, addressed to the mayor and trustees. We wish to inform you of a new member who has been approved to our company for a probationary period of six months, Joseph Dubuque, One Washington Avenue apartment, three Ross's Point. Please act on this member as soon as possible. On behalf of the membership of the department, Chief Laramie and President Nottel would like to wish members of the board and their families a joyous and safe holiday season.
I'll make a motion that we accept this member.
I'll second, Deb.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Is there any no discussion? All those in favor, vote by you. You say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all, first one.
Okay, report to mayor and trustees. Just a reminder, first thing on the agenda, just a reminder of the holiday train, this Thursday, fifth, at 12:30 in the morning.
That's Wednesday night, okay?
Well, it's Thursday, it's going to be Thursday morning at 12:30.
Okay, so it is Wednesday night.
Yeah, and we'd like, anybody that comes up, please bring a, a non-perishable item in a box or can for the food shelf, and we'll have some sort of a container to collect them. Anybody that's up there, also be a hot chocolate service. My next item is a resolution by the board, that says, whereas the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point believes that Ross's Point Elementary School to be a safe building, whose central location is an asset for the children and the parents in the village, and whereas the board of trustees also believe this school is an economical building to maintain, and whereas the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point believes the Ross's Point Elementary School to be a focus point in the village, and somewhat of a landmark of which past and present residents boast, and whereas the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point believe the closing of the elementary school in Ross's Point be detrimental effect on the economy development in this village, therefore be a result the village trustees of the village of Ross's Point wish to make it known in strong oppositions of the closing of the Ross's Point Elementary School in this village. This resolution, the 32 rule call, vote. Trustee Menard, absent. Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, who may, trustee Huckrow.
I believe, maybe Calvin, you remember this, back at the time, Northeastern Clinton Central School was formed, more than education assured people that the community schools would be maintained. That's a long time ago, and maybe they don't have to abide by.
They've had a complete turnover on the board members.
But there did a big turnover. However, it was, it was at that time. And community schools are very, very important to the North Country.
Is that it?
That's it.
Next item is discussion grant administrator agreement. We have this, this agreement that was signed by Paul, and I believe that some trustees have some concerns, so I'll turn it over to whoever has the concerns.
It was my understanding at the last meeting that the agreement would be decided upon once all of these parties had a chance to read it. And the only thing that I'm really concerned about is that it, even though we'll be paying Mr. Quiller out of the grant proceeds, it's not clear to me what the job description will be for the money they give him during it. It's not that I have any necessarily questions about what the job that you've done, Paul, or that will continue to be done, but I'm just thinking as much as, we've now essentially made this a paid position, we need to be as responsible with this particular agreement as we are with any other consultant that we hire, with any part-time, full-time employees that we have. I think he just needs to be a little bit more specific in terms of what the description will be. That's the one concern that I have.
I don't, I guess I'm not clicking or something, but I think it's got to be fairly general. You can't get into a whole lot of detail, because he has so many different hats he has to wear along the process as he administers, right?
Then I think.
I don't know, Paul, you, you could defend yourself better than I could, can I do?
I, my understanding is to continue doing what I've done for the past seven years. It was never specifically written out in detail, but the job has gotten done as per the report I sent to the board in great detail, I believe. It's getting the project completed. That's the job description. And whatever acts it takes, I mean, if you want to restrict whether I go down there so many days a week, or whatever, I mean, that's up to you people. I was satisfied with the straight four, two-line agreement that was presented to me. My main concern is not that I'd be here tonight, my main concern is I need an answer on the signs. But I know you're discussing this, but as far as I'm concerned, it's just get writing grants, filling out the paperwork, reporting, and maintaining all the paperwork that involves grants, whether I write the applications or not, getting your money from the various state and federal agencies that we deal with, making sure the books come out, even though I have to readily admit, I transpose two numbers in the last bill I sent this E S D C, I asked for $12,460, and the bill was actually $12,640, but they caught my mistake and corrected it, and sent us $12,640.
Well, let me just.
I don't know how else to do it.
Well, let me just say one thing, it's not a matter of Paul needing to defend himself, so I, I hope that you didn't misunderstand where I'm going with this.
I don't know where you're going, that's why I asked.
Well, my, my point is this, I guess as a trustee, I don't know then, based on what Paul's agreement with us will now be, what can we reasonably ask him to do?
Be responsible for the entire waterfront project, is that how you see it, Paul?
Yeah. And any other grant applications that you've asked me to run?
Okay, so there's something else that we can put in. And the list, Paul, that you just went through, I just don't see why we can't put something like that down in this agreement. To me, this is too general, it's too general. I don't have a good understanding of what his job is going to be.
I thought it was pretty specific, it says grant administrator for Waterfront Revitalization Project.
Well, maybe it's my misunderstanding of what a grant administrator does, but I'm sorry, to me, it doesn't say enough. I mean, we're, we're, even though the money is coming out of the grant proceeds, we're going to be spending potentially next year $12,000. To me, that $12,000 is worth putting some specific line items down, paperwork in this agreement. That's, that's just my opinion of what I think needs to happen. The same way, it would be for any part-time employee of the village who's earning that kind of money, I think it's not unreasonable to expect there would be some sort of a job description. I agree with you, George. It does say grant administrator for the waterfront revitalization project, I don't know what that means. So I don't, I just don't see why we can't.
I can certainly defend, well, I won't even use the term defend, because I'm not in a defensive position. Bottom line is, this is what was accomplished in the last couple of years. Your statement concerning the village is going to expend $12,000 is totally incorrect. The state is going to spend $12,000 to pay you people. So you want to, you want to make it, if you want to tie it down, both sides can play that side of the game. I can very strictly say, yes, I will only write grants, I will only do this, I will only do that. I'm offering you the services that you have gotten for free for six years, not a bolt has been dropped, not a single thing has gone wrong with the project, other than minor details with the bathroom, which were fixed, and I'm saying, I'm just going to continue on. If my word and the signature of the board and the mayor is not good enough, I'm not going to go out and hire a lawyer to write a contract.
Let me just repeat what I said earlier, Paul. This is not specific to you. It is because you happen to be the case that we're dealing with right now, but I, I am not asking you to defend yourself, and I think that you have done an excellent job as a grant administrator, at least in writing the grants and getting the waterfront project going, and I think you are to be commended for that. That is not my point. My point is, if I hear about a grant somewhere or I read it, can I reasonably come to you and ask you to write it? I don't know based on what is on this piece of paper.
That's the job of the grant administrator.
But it's the grant administrator for the waterfront revitalization project, let's pause it.
Change it, just say village grant administrator.
Well, that's my question, then, I mean, can we?
There's change with the village grant administrator, doesn't have to be for just that project. Bottom line is this, there are two other applications still pending, as my report stated. One is signed by the mayor, the other is signed by me. When he comes in, if the mayor, or Mr. Huckrow, or Mr. Jefferson, or yourself want to administrate it, go so and do it. If you don't, I'm there to do it.
And that's fine, I just, in my opinion, it, it just, it, it would make the agreement a little bit better, in my opinion, if it was more specific in terms of what he will be doing. That's all, Paul. I'm just trying to understand the situation better.
My, my understanding of grant administrator is, if grants are available, and I have to kind of rewrite them, I write them at the request of the board. My understanding is, if it is awarded, I prepare, evaluate, and present to the board a contract to be signed with the granting agency, which is the next step that will be taking place with this, this last grant. We should be getting a contract, I just spoke to Mr. Moss again this morning, we should be getting a draft contract, at which time, after reviewing it and having a lawyer review it, a village lawyer should review it, because it is a, it is a contract with the state. And that's how we've done the others. I will in turn then recommend that the mayor sign it. And then it goes on, and it happens. Now, as far as the details of the hyper, I mean, when it comes to a bid, no, I don't make the final decision. There's always been a board member, or the mayor, or a board member, and the mayor at any one of these things. So it's not like I'm the czar, so to speak.
It's not, it's not my application at all, I just think.
All I'm saying is, grant administration in my mind is simple. I go for grants, I get grants. I make them happen, I get paid for it. It's as simple as that. And there's no complication behind it. There's reports that have to be issued on each one of these things, in great detail. Paperwork, paperwork, paperwork.
We're not questioning you, like, you're not doing a good job, because like we said that.
No, I didn't expect the tour.
No, 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 I mean, you've done a good job, and really, you're the only guy in town that's brought any initiative to do this. And for that, you know, we're very appreciative of that. So that's, don't take it the wrong way.
No, if you want, hey, if you want to rewrite it, rewrite it, I don't.
I don't have a problem.
Well, I, I, it just, you know, if you read back in the minutes from last time, and again, Paul, this is not specific to you, it's just the way that I feel about it. It says, "This agreement shall become effective pending agreement by all parties involved." So I, I remember specifically discussing last week that everyone would take a look at this before it was signed, so that we could all have input into it. And I'm just feeling that tonight is my opportunity to do that, so.
Would you like to do the table, bring it up?
No, no, no.
Well, I think that we've made the decision that this, that this is going to happen. I just think if we have a formal agreement with Paul, it should reflect more specifically what his job is, so that it's clear to everyone. Because right now, I, I have in theory an idea of what he has been doing, and based on the report that you sent to us, Paul, it certainly sums up a number of things very precisely. But going forward, again, I just, I want to feel comfortable that I understand what this agreement actually means.
I put it this way, I've never said no to any board member or any village officer when they've asked me to write a grant application. I don't see why.
I don't know. I think, I personally think I'd like to see it stay the way it is, and I'll tell you my reason. Number one, the money is coming out of the waterfront grant, period.
I understand that.
And if we put extra duties onto him, the waterfront grant's paid for something else. So I, I'd just like to see it stayed the way it is. Grant administrator for waterfront revitalization project, end of conversation.
So you're saying, then, that he will not write any grants that have nothing to do with waterfront?
Well, if we do that, then where, where do we get funds for?
Can I make a suggestion?
Well, that's my question.
Just simplify, drop off waterfront project, and it'll be an understanding between me and you. If one, that is the primary thing I'm going to be working on, but if there are downtown grants that you want me to write, I do it.
And I understand that.
Yeah.
With that, we've done.
Just use the term grant administrator. Drop it, cut it right there. I think we're better off to leave that. Whatever way you want to do it.
I need a motion to the effect, either to accept or reject.
You're making a motion, God, to accept.
Okay, I'm going to second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, is there any more discussion? No other discussion, all those in favor, vote by you. You say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carried. I have to vote aye.
Do you want to have a vote on this subject? May I get a decision on the sign?
On signs?
I don't know if you have a consensus at this point.
No, I have two issues. I've got two board members that want signs, like two panel signs, and I've got two board members that want the triangular sign.
What is going on these signs, Paul?
What is going on these signs? Very simply, the thing's going on the signs is going to be a historic description of the sports prince pier as it was in yesteryear, with the appropriate photographs and historic data. The history, historic society is working with people on that. There's also going to be the same type of description and photographs embedded in, as described in the sign brochure you've got, of the Rutland Railroad, Rutland to Hagensburg Railroad track going across. There's also going to be a description and the appropriate historic data on the lighthouse that is viewable from there. And I, as I understand, they have one little panel extra, so they're going to put in the second lighthouse further down. Canals will be seen from Ross's Point.
Question?
Yes.
What's the location for the lighthouse? I suppose that's the next question.
No, well, you know, my first, at first, my thoughts were, before I saw what they were producing, or finalized what they were producing, my thoughts were that, you know, an on-the-deck type sign would be appropriate, which is sort of a textbook type thing, and they showed them in the book.
Out on the deck itself.
Out on the deck itself.
Yes.
The problem with that is, I'm personally, I think that that is really asking for trouble as far as vandalism, I mean, it's not going to take very much for a couple of teenagers to go down there, sit on it, lean on it, and then it becomes a safety issue as well. And not necessarily is it going to be maybe where everybody could see it to prevent this from happening. I would like to see the sign thing, if you all not too long ago received the engineering documentation on this, there is a plaza-like area. You want to put all three there? Well, if you go the three-way sign, it fits perfectly.
Right in this area. You know, right in here.
Let's see here. Sit right here. Right in here, this plaza.
All right, so you're not, you're talking about things out on here, then?
Now, my recommended, originally, yes, but now I don't think it's such a good idea, because first of all, you're going to leave a half light out there, it's going to be prone to vandalism. If you have it in a central area, well, the probability is less. In my own mind, the triangular sign gives you the effect right in the middle. Again, it's your choice.
If you're not going to have it out here, if it's going to be out there, I 100 percent agree. If they're going to be along the way, I would watch a.
That's what I was thinking, either there or here.
Yeah, yeah. It's going to, well, I think one of these drawing shows a five. Or halfway.
Details.
Yeah. But in any case, prior to it being installed, the signs will be completed well before the pier is completed, at which time, we still have a choice of where we put it. My only question is, do you want a three-way or a two-way or a look-alike?
I think that three-way.
It's going to be on the land with three-way.
That three-way.
Three-way.
But the, the flat sign is better if you're looking out at something and you're reading the description, so you can read and look at it. If you have the three-way, you have to stand behind it, you can't necessarily have to read, then look, and then go back and read, and then look. If you can read and look up, which is where, where you see those signs, where they're referencing something that you're looking at at a distance, it's very nice to have the description in front of you, and all you need to do is look up to see the item that you're looking at.
My only concern about that type of thing, again, is a safety issue and the probability of vandalism, because we can get that, hang them off the, or, you know, pull them off the railing type thing, it doesn't matter, they're really, in fact, bottom line, I think if you took the three-panel one and wanted to change it, lay the date, make them in, it's no big deal, our own guys could make the difference to make the things out there.
You're a lot better off with, with the V-shaped one with the south wind. You put a flat board out there, you don't have to.
Yeah, it's, they get in the water in less than six months.
I mean, if you got, if it's sitting south like this, you can look around, you can see the lighthouse, you can see everything. If you put a flat panel like this with the south winds, it's going to be about three years, it's going to be downwind.
But it's not a flat panel, because it's almost, it's almost parallel to ground body.
The pedestal type.
The pedestal type. But the other one, you talked about, the flat panel.
More like. This is more like a, like the thing in church.
Podium.
Podium.
Yeah.
I'll let just slightly raise on one end.
It's not a flat surface.
But there again, the framework of that is converted very simply, okay? In fact, I don't think I even want a post, do you, Paul?
Well, if they were going to be on, on the way, you know, along the way up in the end, I'd be, I'm trying to kill you, could you stop?
Absolutely.
But if they're all going to be in one location.
Well, if we get the signs made, and I'm a total of sign company right now, give us a three-way post, I can assure you that it will be built in a fashion, or that the design is such, that leans, lends itself, that if the board changes his mind at a later date and wants it physically out there, we don't.
Who do we have to touch it over?
Can we think about this for two weeks?
Actually, the people that are making the signs would like to get them going, and they're the ones that are pressing me. I, I sort of promised the, that answer last week.
Yeah, one of their, one of their people was here last week on something else, and they mentioned that.
I pretty much made up my mind, and I thought a flat one on the shore, and then pedestals on the way out, but if we were going to do that, however, if we're going to have it in one location, I would prefer the triangular.
Is it possible to put them in more than one location on the shore?
One by more, yeah.
But no, I mean, if we, if.
Yes, you can put three individual signs.
I'm sorry?
You may frame each individual sign, and you could put two there and one on the dock, any combination you want.
Because, well, the only, sometimes it's nice when you're looking at something like that, if you're walking along, you know, you stalk every so often at where the signs are, and you're looking at the description, and you're looking out at where what, what things are, rather than having it in a more particular location.
I like, I like that, too. It's going to be that much more costly to do a whole plant.
Anything to be more.
What's your biggest thought, Paul? The idea? The total, you've already paid for half of it, and you've already been reimbursed for that. It's $5,100 with the complete signage, all manufactured, with the legs and everything. You have already prepaid half of that, and you have already been reimbursed by Empire State Development Corporation for that, so you were, you paid, but you got it back quick.
But the two signs, either the three-way or the flat panels are the same cost?
Yeah. It's the same contract, no matter what.
I think we should spread them out on the shore, I think we don't want to put them out on, on the pier.
I'd rather see them on, I'd rather see them on the pier, and I think incidents of vandalism would be less than on, than if you had a bunch of pedestal ones on, on the shore, on the shore.
All I'm asking for is.
I know, sure, I was.
I just want to make one my statement, that's why I've been operating alone.
That's, that's pretty good. Discussion, Paul, is not ever really a factor.
Oh, no, 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 I don't mind the discussion, I'm just saying, it's easier when you're operating alone, just get it done. I, I made a point of making sure the board had input on this, because I figured it would be areas, there would be people who would disagree with the choice, no matter what, so.
My only concern is, my only interest in it is if it's going to be strictly in one location, the triangle, or it's going to be broken down in the pedestal.
It is, it is the board's choice. In fact, what I can do, I think I can assume, I will tell the lady, and I, I think Paul would agree, this is probably the easiest way out of this, make them, frame them, and we'll take care of hanging them. How's that? How's that? When I say we'll take care of hanging them, we're capable of making them into a three-way, or we're capable of making them into a two-way, or we're capable of making into a podium. I mean, it's just a couple...
But are we paying them to make them completely?
Yeah, you are right now, probably $200 difference, maybe.
So we would only be paying them to make the actual signs themselves, not the stands that are going to stand them?
The stands come with the signs. It's part of the company that makes the signs. They throw the stands in, they're just trying to find out what kind of stand you want.
Make the suggestion.
Yes.
Put the three signs on podiums, if we don't like them, then we put them up on a pride.
That works fine with me.
Okay.
Okay, we can always cut the podium off and put less on it.
Make a motion out, Mr. Mayor, or you need a motion over there?
I don't need one.
Why don't you give me direction?
That's what I'm saying, yes. So I'll make a motion.
No seconded. Motion made, seconded. Any more discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by, you just sign a bye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, let's see. Last thing on my agenda is Champlain Celebration. Who was the lady that was here? I'm having a senior moment.
Oh, yeah, right. She was a very nice lady.
I can't remember her name.
Her name is Kennedy.
Yeah, Janet Kennedy, thank you.
Janet Kennedy?
Yeah, Janet Kennedy. She was here last week on Celebration Champlain Project Overview, which just is, is the start of the 400th anniversary of Samuel B. Champlain discovering Lake Champlain. And they're starting to put together the committees on both sides of the lake to, to put the celebration together right down the lake. We had a very nice talk with this young lady. She went through the projects that were listed that they wanted to go through, and her comments was, Ross's point, very well on the way, things are covered pretty well. All she's looking for now is a committee for this Champlain celebration. Our waterfront, she said, is, you know, you've just got to head with it, you've done it, we've got it.
The signs come through her, by the way.
Yeah, I know. I had mentioned, remember I said there was a lady here, but I couldn't take her in? And so, I bring that before the board now, and we would like to get either a committee or a spokesperson for the Lake Champlain Celebration. And also, she is very interested in our, in our committee. We'd like to see, you know, some, that committee put together and work with this.
Oh, I think that's, that would be something they would very much enjoy working on.
Again, it's looking for answers. I will say this. I was very much surprised that she worked with both Vermont and New York. And she said the New York side is pitching in 100% right up the lake shore. Unfortunately, on the other side of the lake, there is only the Gents and City of Rhode.
Can I just clarify something, Mr. Mayor? Ms. Kennedy worked for the federal government.
Yeah, I know that.
She worked for people that are on that carpet very scared of right now. You know, those byways?
That's what it is.
That's what it's all about.
Yeah, the Lake Champlain byway.
Be aware of who you're dealing with, that's all. I'm not demeaning her in any way, but that's her job. Lake Champlain byways.
Lake Champlain byways.
And those signs could... The signs you just agreed to are conform with that. We've departed that since the word go.
And that's what she said, that, you know, we have, our, our projects that we have started and have completed, we're probably eight, nine years ahead of everyone else on the way up.
Mr. Mayor, I just got this today, and I'd like to, I think we can talk about it in two weeks.
Yeah, fine, fine. I just wanted to bring it up.
I haven't had a chance to read it, I'll look it over, but...
And that's it for me. Trusty Hutrow?
No, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I need, I need a motion tonight, gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen, to formally accept Manor and Cabal Drive. Apparently, we can't find anything in a minute without a pass.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is any other discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by, you just sign a bye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. That's it, right, Beth?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Trusty Hutrow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, do you have a feed on water projects?
Yes, I do. On the water storage tank, you might have noticed that Leamark threw, finished the second course of the vertical piece, and they then took Thanksgiving off. They'll be back in town tomorrow. If they think the snow is scary, wait till they come back to the temperatures they have Friday morning. So their hope was to get the third course on and button it up before the winter. We'll see how their welding goes this week. Their welding has gone well in the temperatures we've seen thus far, but they'll have a new test tomorrow. And also, while we're making great progress with John Carr on the funding application, pulling together past costs that the villagers have paid for water storage study and other costs that have been spent on the water storage tank. We're getting that all in there so we can get reimbursement or credit for the village having contributed to its portion of the the water resource. And that's it for the water. No questions?
Did we find anything out from Jim King about the gold tank?
That's in my court. George, I've had communication with him, and I'm working on correspondence. We'll get that done.
You got that letter ready yet?
It'll be done this week, sorry.
Basically, Kelly just answered that FEMA has posed up all the litigation. But we are sending a letter to be on file.
Thanks, Doug. One more reminder that Friday evening will be the lighting of the George Christmas Lights Streets and the crib toys, which will begin at Ross Park at 6:45 and proceed to Tengah Road and Gazeem Bowl for the lighting at 7:00, at which time the mayor will have a profound statement to make, to the holiday season, I'm sure. And that will be followed by Christmas carols, hopefully provided by a good number of members of the community singers. And, oh, she mentioned that, my goodness, my bad. And Santa Claus will be visiting with children, and there'll be hot cocoa and cookies for everybody. So if you can make it, please be there. And if you can believe what the National Weather Service says, wear your long johns. It's going to be cold. Along with, it's not on the agenda, but Sunday evening, there has been a good amount of advertising this year for the first time. The community singers will be performing at Three Steeple's Methodist Church at 7:00. And we've got a lot, 25 or so members of the group. And we'd like to have as many people as can attend. We are one of the few organizations that offers a Christmas program free. And we'd like to have as many people as can. And a little advertisement maybe for Three Steeple's. They have an Italian-style smorgasbord beginning at 4:00 that afternoon. Anyway, hopefully you can all make it. I'd like to request an executive session to discuss, I lost my piece of paper, discuss the public board first of all.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Lo Kong Lo, Trusty Hutrow?
Aye.
Trusty Penfield?
Aye.
Trusty Jarvison?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Next item is a discussion of the work teams' compensation insurance. Our carrier, Shawman Agency, has been kind enough to supply us with information as to the costs of the compensation insurance, and it's getting more and more expensive every year. It is his suggestion that we might go with FERMA, which is the organization, the company that is recommended by the New York State Conference of Mayors, and it would keep our premium to about the same level as it is this year. Is that correct, Beth?
Correct.
So that is my recommendation.
Motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll second you.
Any discussion?
What, what? This, what is different from what we have now with FERMA ton?
The coverage is the same. And they are promising us representatives, they're promising us quick service, they're promising us basically the same type of coverage. Are there any differences that are notable? I don't think so.
I don't, I don't see any differences. The problem is that our rating has gone too high for state insurance.
Our experience, our experience rating went from one to 13 this year. That means that employees that have been off on compensation jacked the insurance up, and jacked it up to $5,000.
But the coverage with FERMA will be pretty much what we have now. So we understand, you know, till we try it, I guess we really don't know if we get the kind of service we got from state.
So the only thing I can, I can tell you about this is that they have a booth at the conference of mayors. There's about 318 communities in the state of New York that are insured with it. Yes, it's changed. Yes, it's new to us. About $5,000, $5,000.
So, that's the motion. Do you have a second?
Yes, I second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by, you just sign a bye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
One more item. We have received a good number of applications. They were due on the 25th of November for the those administrative positions, and looking at the moment, there are quite a few, I think, that are worth taking a look at, so we'll be looking after them, and Trusty Penfield will be setting up soon to do before long, I hope. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trusty Hutrow, Trusty Penfield.
First item that I have this evening is a report on a meeting in Champlain Fire District that the mayor and I attended last Tuesday. It was in response to their request to include the Ross's Point Fire Department and the fire commissioners in a meeting to discuss some future concerns primarily involving EMT coverage, especially towards the daytime. A large part of the meeting centered around, excuse me, the current contract that we have with the fire district, and the current amount of money that they are paying us to cover the portion of the district that we cover. And we spent an awful lot of time talking about, basically, how to allocate the cost of our coverage, and whether or not the $45,000 that we currently receive from them is adequate, and basically, how do we arrive at that particular figure? So it seems to me that, that what they are asking us to do is to accept the quote that they've given us for half of that for half of the year, and to use that time between January and June to actually meet with the Ross's Point and Champlain Fire Departments, the board from the fire district, and members of this board, to put our heads together and to do some future planning. And it seems that they are a little bit ahead of us in terms of discussing this, like the problems with the EMT coverage due to the daytime issues that exist, and they very much want us to participate in those discussions with them. And I know, discussing with some of the members of the fire department after that meeting, excuse me, I think that, and while you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me that the firefighters themselves, I think, would like an opportunity to once and for all sit down with the four groups together, and then potentially even the town board if they are required, you know, have an interest in being there, to really put our heads together and to do some future planning. And I know that that is, that is an interest that they have. So I would like to make a motion this evening that we do just that, that we accept their 22/5 for the six-month period of January 1st through June 30th, 2003, and then we use that six months to sit down with them and look at what's best for both departments and both districts through the future.
Motion made, seconded. Any other discussion? All right, you got a second?
I hope that things will, will squelch their little discussions, the way we were treated in that meeting. I have never in my life represented a community or any other entity and been treated as rudely as I was treated as we were treated by certain members of the board of fire departments.
I already heard that.
Well, as I mentioned at the last meeting, Matt, I spoke about that today, but we were not even talked with after our initial proposal last summer, and I think we've got to, some way or the other, get communication happening. And maybe Kelly's suggestion of doing a six-month contract and then having meetings, sitting down and talking with people, and not have people talk to us or read to them, is the way to go.
Any other discussion? Chair, if you have any other stuff, all those in favor, vote by, you just sign a bye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Oh, I'm sorry. But I want to vote no. Motion carried.
Okay, the second item that I have this evening concerns the Johnson Memorial Library. And you know we have put money in the budget this year to do some updated renovations on the outside of the library. And the gentleman who we had spoken with about doing just that was unable to fit it into his schedule before the weather arrived. And so Bobby Clark and I went over there last week and took a look at some things that we could possibly do this winter on the inside of the building, which are definitely needed. I know Bobby has some ideas about how to accomplish that. And Bobby, anything to add?
No, not yet. He's got his say, I think he is.
Okay. So we talked about doing some of the window casings, repainting, right, Bob? And repairing some of the plaster that needs to be repaired?
Yeah.
So there are, there are some areas which are really in need of repair. So we do have the money in the budget earmarked for the library, and to me, it would be a very worthwhile project to do.
Are we going to fix this, so Bob, and then have the water leak and have to redo it, or is it just something that just...
Where's the water leak? There's no water leak.
Oh, there's no, I misunderstood.
There's no water leak in that building, get that straight.
Oh, okay.
What happened was the air conditioner didn't clean the fans out, and you got condensation in it. But the roofs and stuff do not leak in that building.
Oh, okay.
And I know, I know a lot of people have been saying that, but that's not true.
Okay.
No, there appear to be some, there were plaster cracks, are you fine?
Yeah, the plaster is cracked and falling away to the walls.
Some of it is on the wall, not even on the ceiling, so.
And it needs to be taken care of before it falls down.
Yeah, let's fix it.
And it really needs a paint job on the inside. The inside is, you know, it hasn't been painted in, what, 40 years? It's been painted since I've been here, so.
Needs a good paint job.
Yeah, we did a lot on the exterior of the building, you know, the windows and the heating and all that. We need to do something with the interior, and then probably budget enough money to paint the exterior in the next summer.
Okay. The last item I have is an authorization to travel, and Beth, you're going to have to help me with these dates. It is for Clifford Sterling to do an introduction to code enforcement practices, and it looks like December 3rd and December 10th, December 5th and December 12th. Is that right?
Yes, it's two different times.
It's two different times, okay.
Correct.
Excuse me, and so I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Clifford Sterling to travel to this introduction to code enforcement practices seminar.
One second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no, no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And that is all I have.
Thank you, Trusty Penfield, Trusty Jarvison.
Okay, Doug, would you explain, we started talking about it earlier. I had three, four people come to me this week and ask me about how the piping that goes around Lake Street is going to be protected from the water.
Yeah, the way that piping that's going to travel along the lakeside of Lake Street is going to be protected is it's going to be compacted gravel, and it's going to have erosion protection, that would be grabstone bedding, et cetera. So Fizdill has designed it to withstand the forces of the lake, and so we're out there expecting to make sure that the contractor's supplying the materials as opposed to, so that it will be protected.
Just worried about the ice and all that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's an obvious concern, and the ground engineer is well aware of it. I believe on paper, we've got it covered, and then we have to make sure that we have it covered in the field.
You have any other update?
Yeah, on the sewer project, what happened in the last couple of weeks is that the sewer laterals on Maple Street, that work has been completed. The water services on Maple Street, that work has been completed. And the paving, the asphalt, blacktop plants shut down last Tuesday. And so we finished what paving we could, and so there's some spots that are open, those big gravel for the winter. The crossing beneath Route 11 at Pine Street occurred a week ago, and that's been completed. been completed. And, uh, on Pine, we're on Pine Street now, we'll be putting in the new water line on Pine, Pine Street as well as, uh, the forest main that connects to the pipe that went under we planted on Pine Street. And, uh, this week we'll be looking to finish the work on Pine Street and do the crossing beneath Route two seventy-six Pratt Street. Um, that's the forest main connection there. That should be happening this week. And that's it. We're in question on the sewer.
Uh, am I right in assuming that, uh, I call it rope cloth is going to be put down on the lakeside?
Yeah, I don't have the design memorized, but, uh, we will need some geotext out fast there.
We won't have that pusher scrolling up anymore.
Is that?
I'll double check.
Is that flat area going to remain? If it's flat there?
No, that's our banister thing using for construction purposes.
Okay, and that's it? It will be gone? Okay.
It'll be the slope.
Okay.
Okay. I just have a couple other things. Uh, I had a nice visit with Dr. Southwood the other day and, uh, we talked about the fire contractor. And, uh, I said to Dr. Southwood just what I said to Jules Tran and some of the other people on the board, uh, it's very important that the village of Rouse's Point, the town of Champlain, uh, communicate and cooperate because there's not many of us here and I feel like someday the town of Champlain and the village of Rouse's Point will all be one. Now, I'm not an economic forecaster or anything, but there's not a lot of people up here and there's a lot of repetition of services in the town, in the village of Champlain and in the, the village of Champlain. So, uh, you know, of course, Jules is from Rouse's Point and, uh, you know, I talked to Bruce Wall, it's a good friend of mine, and it, it's real important that we're all on the same page, that we all know what the right hand is doing and the left hand is doing. So with the fire department and everything too, it's, it's important that we communicate. So I, I hope that we can spell communication with a capital C and, you know, get along the best we can. And another thing that I've noticed too, that, uh, nobody's ever said anything to the people that, we're looking for people to join the fire department. Walter, I, I think maybe we could try to advertise that a little bit. You need EMTs and you need fire department, I would say. A lot of, sometimes people just have to be asked, you know, to join, so. I know you have picked up some new members, so maybe we could put that in paper and put it out to people that, uh, we're looking for people in the fire department of Rouse's Point and Champlain Institute. During the summer, we worked with the fire department during the Fourth of July. If there's a fire in Champlain, we'd go, just like they would come here. So I think it's real important. And I just have a couple other things. Just want to remind people that, uh, there's a toy drive going on and, uh, the banks are getting a little low too, so. I'll stay like the priest. For the people that can afford it, please consider to donate some food and please consider to donate some, uh, some gifts to the kids this year. And that's all I have today.
Thank you, thank you, Trusty Jefferson. Okay, I open the meeting up to, uh, no, other reports, excuse me. Have?
Uh, the only thing I want to say is I think you all received, uh, Tim Clark's grades from the last school he went to. I think he deserves to be congratulated. He did very well.
Absolutely. He did great, didn't he?
That's all I have.
Carson?
We received a letter from Tisdale Associates and to paraphrase it, uh, the funding from the Environmental Facilities Corporation will not be available prior to March at the earliest. And since we are doing the forest main contract, the initial contract is four hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. Um, we're expecting an additional fifty, sixty thousand dollars in change orders and then we've got engineering fees and inspection fees on top of that. So we have to go out for some more additional short form borrowing. And so I suggest that we go at the high end, six hundred and fifty thousand. So permission from the board to contact bond council, borrow six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
What's the interest rate, Arson, do you know? The bond? I have no idea.
I think it was one point five the last time.
I'll make a motion that we authorize our send to, go ahead and check that out.
Yeah, I'll second that too.
Motion made, seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote like you just said, a bye?
Aye.
Most opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Aye?
Nothing.
Doug?
I'll step.
Walter?
The other thing I wanted to say is that we're in the time of year again, I'm probably a month late it is, but, uh, those that burn wood, if you haven't checked your chimneys, make sure that they're checked, make sure they're clean. And, uh, we're getting into the Christmas season and make sure that all the Christmas decorations are safe and manufacturer's recommendations are followed. Same thing with the lights on the trees, et cetera. Let's have a safe holiday season.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Walter. Open the meeting up to the public at this time. Anybody wishing to address the board may do so. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the, the fire department and the ambulance service for, they took me down to Plattsburgh the other day and I, I appreciate that. Okay? And I've got another thing to say too, that's going to be different, uh, is I haven't received any notification that you received the things I've sent with my water bill and sewer bill. And I wonder if you, you know anything about that? You know the, the stuff that I've sent?
I do not.
I know of, I'm not sure of the things you're talking about. I know of one of the things, a note from the town of Champlain.
That's correct.
Okay. There was a note from the town of Champlain that came from, what was the woman's name?
Pat Harris.
Yeah, Pat Harris. And, uh, and what it did is it was a, a handwritten letter that just said that, uh, Mr. Fernal had been in and, uh, what he had done is he'd explained that he no longer had a three apartment unit structure, but that he had a two apartment unit structure.
That's correct.
And so, uh, Mrs. Air changed the, uh, classification, um, with the word for Mr. Fernal from a three apartment to a two apartment unit. Um, I'd like to point out that that has no impact on the assessed value of his building. His building was not inspected. It was not reassessed. It was just, uh, she changed the words for him. Uh, she did not change the value of the building. The building stayed the same. Mr. Fernal submitted, uh, that paperwork to us as, uh, a proof for a data point to have the board consider there. The town thinks that I have a two-unit apartment building and so you should also. Um, my recommendation to the board is that, um, that interaction between Mrs. Air and yourself really, uh, has no impact on, or is irrelevant as far as our relationship and our arrangement with, uh, Mr. Fernal because?
Excuse me, you have no arrangement with me, with some?
Well, the arrangement that I referred to is that we have?
Your decision is what you're talking about.
Our decision.
Okay.
We have a three-unit apartment structure that had been classified as such for a long period of time. Uh, we still consider it a three-unit apartment building until material change has occurred, been expected by the code enforcement officer and determined to classify it otherwise. Um, Mr. Fernal's concern is that he's paying three waters, three sewer bills for this structure and what he feels he should be charged is two waters and two sewer bills. In other words, approximately a one-third reduction in the water and sewer bill. I would submit that if the town of Champlain in changing his classification from a three-unit to a two-unit building were to have to reduce his assessment by one-third, then they would have taken a look at his building and reconsidered that change. But since there was no cost impact, they, it didn't matter. It does not matter. Is there any other correspondence that you sent to us or was that it?
Well, I, I can't remember. I wrote a couple of notices on them, but they're not pertinent value. I would consider that to be the most pertinent.
Okay, that was the one that I recall.
Mm-hmm. Uh, I don't know what to say to that. Obviously, my house is not, uh, a three-apartment house. I have two families in that house. And unless you all are paying eighty-five dollars for your house, for your water, for one family, I think that is incorrect. I think it is, it should be changed. And, uh, I don't know what to do about it yet, but I bring it to you again, it is incorrect to charge me two things for one, unless you are paying. It's as simple as that.
Barry, when you brought this up to the board, you were pretty hot on it. We took action right away. You never had, you didn't even come back to the meeting.
I have been working sixteen hours a day and can go to work and see that. Every Monday night or whatever nights you're here. I've only come in here because it's, it's, uh, I'm not working and it's, I can pay one night for the monthly payment by working that night. I could pay for six months, so why would I come here and I can pay six months of that forty, forty dollars by being here? Does it make any sense? That's monetarily incorrect to do, so I don't. But I'm here free tonight.
That's not the issue.
What is the issue?
The issue is you were real hot on this.
I still am real hot.
We sent the village, uh, our engineer down there and we discussed that and then we came to an agreement and then you didn't even come, like you didn't even care about that. Now, that kind of bothered me, that you were so hot on it.
I don't know. No, no. I have been talking all around the village to other people that have had or should be having this same problem. Others have agreed with me, but they don't want to do anything about it. I don't know why they don't. Uh, the only reason I haven't been back here, I have been writing notices to the, the, when my bill comes in, I, I send verbal notification when I can, whatever I, whatever I think can help my cause. Obviously, that isn't helping my cause, so I'm back here again for the first night I have a chance.
Do you still currently have the three electrical meters on your house?
I certainly do and I've checked into that with, uh, Mr. Pro. Uh, he can, he says it can be rectified to make that all into one unit. However, it makes more connections and it appeared to me that there's, that to him, that there's no point in it and more connections would make electrical, uh, electrical stuff less safe than less connections. Am I right, Bobby?
While I didn't look at your situation, Barry, I can't say that.
Well, he had, you don't put it in and that's basically what we discussed.
If you got three meters or two meters, if you're going to take one out, it's just a matter of adding a disconnect. But you can't do anything in the electrical field unless it's protected anyway. So, I mean, uh, you know, it, it doesn't affect any of the, the other part of the house if you take one meter off and as long as it's properly protected by a few bank, it, it makes no difference.
He's the electrician a lot of times. I don't know. I don't know what that means.
What are your long-term plans? Are you going to keep it the way it is or are you thinking here down the road, you're going to maybe go back and run it out?
No. I've got, I've got kids in it. Till I get rid of the, some of the kids, there's no way I can do that. Uh, as a matter of fact, I'm going to move from one, my kitchen, I'm going to put it in the other kitchen and get rid of one, but that's later, when I get time to do it. I don't. Right now, I might be having time because I've cut back on overtime, but that's, that's neither here nor there. Why am I even discussing that? I mean, the point is, I got one house and I should have one water bill. Simple. If you paid two for when you live in, if you're all paying eighty-five dollars for your house, you're the only one I know that's got apartment in his house. I don't know the rest of them. If you pay eighty-five dollars for the, your house, I'll pay eighty-five. But you're not. I am. I don't like it and I shouldn't be doing it. It's simple. I am living in it. I am not renting it. He come down inside, I'm not renting it.
Very simple, Barry.
Yeah?
Code says, or our village code says, you've got three meters, you've got three apartments. Take one of their meters out.
The town says I have two now.
But you have three meters.
You're in the village, Joe.
And that, the town's got nothing to do. This is the village code. You have three meters, three electrical meters.
Sir, that's thievery and that's as simple as it gets.
That ain't thievery, I'm just telling you.
It is thievery. I have one apartment, I have two meters. If I had fifty meters, it wouldn't make any difference. Not at all. I would still be using the same amount of electricity and water with the same amount of people in it. My family, not two families, my family. It's as simple as that, sir.
But that's the code and that's what we have to go by.
Then change it because it's wrong.
But, well, we don't have to change the code.
All right. The next thing is, how do you go about an arbitration of the situation? I can't get through to you all. The next arbitration or litigation, I don't know. You tell me how it's done. I don't know how to go against the village like that. I don't prefer to do that, but it's obvious that I'm getting nowhere. You don't understand or I'm too slow to tell you what I'm trying to say here. Because I am not going to pay eighty-five dollars when you are paying forty. Forty-one ninety, to tell you the truth. How do I go about it? There must be a procedure that, that is used to arbitrate this situation.
Contact the attorney and follow your best bet.
Is there any other way?
Well, I don't know. That's what I know. The only way I know.
Take it to court.
That is not a very good solution, would you say?
Bottom line, I guess.
You can change that record the, the way that's done if you want. Am I correct?
I don't think so. If we change that code, then we're opening up a can of worms, period.
See, the problem is, Mr. Fernal, uh, you've got a three-unit apartment building. Let's say there was, you had a ten-unit one or not you, but another.
You explain that to me, sir.
And just, just for the record again, if we have a ten-unit apartment building and then someone says they have a very large family, they buy the building, they have an extremely large family, and then they're saying, I've got my family living in five of these apartment buildings. That's my family, so I should be getting one water, one sewer.
That's correct. I agree that with that.
So, so you see, when we look at your three-unit example, that's the problem. That's why we have to treat the three-unit like we treat a ten-unit, like we treat a fifty.
Okay. I built that house over on Washington Avenue. I put two apartments in it, but I designed it to be one house, one, one family house. All you got to do is put a door in it. It's simple. Just cut the sheetrock, put a door in it. Somebody buys that house for me, I'm obviously not going to live there. I'm renting it to the people. Is that man going to have to pay two water and sewers because he bought one house to live his whole family in it?
Got two electric meters?
Yes.
Remove one, put it all on one, then it becomes one family.
Why should that be?
Then it becomes one family.
You show me in the record where if it has a water meter, it has to be considered a water and sewer bill.
Why'd you put two meters in then?
Because when I moved in there twenty years ago, I had rented, I was renting three of them out. I wanted the, and the village before it changed the way it did business, was collecting from them. That means I had no record keeping. I had nothing to do. And it separated the house, because I have a, a big house, it separated, instead of putting five hundred amps in one spot, I could separate them to two hundred amp boxes and I did sufficient to each apartment. And when I talked to Joe, that's what he suggested. Made sense. Everybody else was, seemed to be doing that. I did that. I did that over there because you was doing the same thing. If I had known this then, when I started it two years ago or three years ago, I wouldn't have done it the way I did. But that's the way you all were doing business, so I continued to do so.
You know why you switched up all?
Yes. Because some people were cheating you and not paying the rent. Have I done so? Have I lied to anybody here? All right.
Some people weren't paying their bills.
Then you should be going after the people that were not doing it, not the ones that are doing it. And that is what you are in fact doing. Going after me and other people, I'm sure. You, as a matter of fact, have an apartment there too. When your child was living in their apartment, were you paying forty, eighty-five dollars? That was before, right?
That was before this.
That's exactly right. Why aren't you unhappy about this? Right now, you have it rented to somebody else, right? They're paying. Well, if I'm renting it to somebody else...
Oh, excuse me. They're not paying it. I'm paying it.
They pay you far.
No, they don't.
Oh, they don't? Well, that's your business. But I charge people that are rented to my place for the water and sewer. That's the way...
Is that wrong to do that?
To me to charge them?
Yeah.
I charge them because you're charging me now. No, I wasn't charging before. You were. Right?
Is the water and sewer a good deal in the last place?
Uh, no, it appears not. When my daughter was in Plattsburgh, it was something like fifteen or twenty dollars for everything. I don't know if it's a good deal. I haven't researched the situation. But I'm not arguing the forty dollars. I'm not arguing the eighty-five or a hundred for one bill, but you're not charging me one bill. You're charging me two bills for one service.
Have you since the summer made any structural changes to your residence at all? Since you were here this summer? Have you done anything of a structural change?
I don't know. I don't think so. I don't think so.
But you have that plan for the future, you said. You just mentioned something before about your kitchen?
I'm going to move a stove to the other side where I have no stove and move all over there because there's a bigger kitchen. And move a refrigerator out of the house into the... Nothing serious. I'm just changing.
Most structural changes. And, uh... Correct me if I'm wrong, but was that part of what Mr. Rasko's report involved, Jeff?
Mr. Rasko did not go there. He didn't.
No. The thinking was that a material change would need to be, uh, formed in order to change a three-unit apartment building into a two-unit apartment.
Okay, let me explain that.
And just... Just ask the way... What do you mean by material change?
Well, material was substantive in terms of taking out... Cabinets, changing it so that since the village is not equipped with occupancy police to go around and spy on people, determine whether their kitchenette or duplex or whatever is being rented, um, we have to rely on a code enforcement officer to go in and determine whether an occupancy has really changed. And so what the village board offered was if he were to change from three electrical services to two, that would be a surefire, quick and easy way to say, "All right, we got a two-unit building." And, uh, that was offered by the board. And, uh, other things could be done. It would have to render that third unit totally apartment-less, if you will, so that it would just become bare space to be... These are things that could be discussed with the code enforcement officer, brought to the board's attention so that the board could then consider, "Maybe we could relax on the electrical issue." Although I think that's a good point and I'd always go back to my ten-unit apartment building example and what we do with a two-unit or a three-unit building, what we do with a ten-unit building. We just have to monitor it that way. It's a good idea you have and I think it's portable and I think it's supportable in court.
And so you will be making one of the apartments kitchenless. Is that correct?
That's arbitrary. I can put a kitchen back in ten minutes. I could also make this apartment into ten minutes and another one.
But you have to understand, making a statement like that, you can put a kitchen back.
I understand exactly what I said.
Okay.
The point is, I have one house. I live in it with one family. I need to be paying one bill. I had to make this apartments, I have to... He doesn't call it structural change. I put a wall in. It's a simple wall. I put it in there so I can... I could take it out in moments.
And you would count it?
Moments, I'm not... I'm exaggerating the length of time. In a half a day, I could have it all back to... Back to whatever. Two days or something like that. Simple.
And you currently have how many kitchens?
Two. And one of them's not being used. One has no stove in it at all.
How many people live in the house?
You count the apartment I'm renting?
Yes.
Two there and I got one. Six, eight. There's a total of eight, I think.
Okay, two in one and six in the other. Is that right?
Yes.
Two in one of the apartments?
Yes.
And six in the other.
Just so I get the figures, just so I... I designed dual usage into everything I do. And I thought I was doing it right because you were doing it that way. Now I find that I've done it all wrong.
Certainly you can understand how most... I mean, perhaps this is just my interpretation, but most single-family homes in the village are not dual usage.
That's right. I understand that.
I don't have two kitchens in my house and, you know, and so on, so...
I understand why you're doing it, but you also understand that I am not using it for two-family house. It is a single-family house and you're still continuing to charge me eighty-five dollars where in fact, if everybody was charged eighty-five dollars or two hundred dollars, I would pay it and I have been paying it for twenty years.
And you have not considered at all...
And I didn't pay it for ten years. Well, no. See, four, five years that I've had my kids in there as one apartment, not as two. For a lot of years, it's been like this. And I didn't pay double water and sewer. I just would come down and tell them when I had a tenant in there, I told them. But when the tenant wasn't, no longer, I come and told them and they stopped charging. That's why I want that.
So what you're saying is when your children first started to live there, the village was not billing them for water and sewer. Is that correct?
They've always lived there, just not in that room.
No, I'm saying after... After the previous tenant moved out, when you were no longer renting it...
I come down and told them I had a... No longer had a tenant. We was living in it. And they did not charge me. This only started in June.
With your pleasure. I thought we had resolved this once, but obviously we haven't.
Look, I don't want to be argumentative, but it's my nature. I can't help myself when I don't get this way, right? Well, you all know the right thing to do as well as I do. It appears that you're hung up by... I don't... The code? Oh, uh, not the code. What is it? Is it the village code? Well, the village code obviously has to have some leeway in it to adjudicate situations that aren't quite the norm. Although I think my situation is reasonably normal. I'm sure there are quite a few houses in this town have two apartments in it. Uh, or at least I would assume so. I don't know. That's just the way I think. I don't know if that's true. I don't understand why nobody's coming forward and addressing this except me is what, you know, bothers me. I think most people know I have the problem because they talk to me all the time about it and I discuss it with whoever. Like I've discussed it with, uh, one of Jules Trahan's sons and, you know, people around. I don't understand. This is not right that people are being charged for something that they are not using. And it is... Seems to me a really unfair situation. I don't have any real means to... To argument... Be argumentative about this. I don't know how to force the situation to my favor. I don't want to force it. I want people to be reasonable. And you know it, what I'm saying is reasonable. I know it because you're all reasonable people. There is no way it couldn't be reasonable. I don't know what the problem is.
Perhaps you should consider taking out that electrical meter.
I have just considered it and it's going to cost me a lot of money. Not only that, it's my opinion and... Although Bobby doesn't seem to be... To think that it'd be any, uh...
It's not... It's not... You're not talking big money. I mean, you know, I don't... What do you say you're spending amount on your water and sewer? The bill, how much? Forty dollars extra?
Yeah.
You should be able to change that meter over for a hundred, a hundred and fifty bucks from one panel to the other. I mean, uh, you know, you're talking to some sub-peak cable, a main breaker and just have us pull one meter and tap back into the two hundred and it's all on that one meter. It shouldn't be a big deal.
Okay.
I mean, not talking big money.
That being said, why should I have to do that?
Well, you want us to compromise, why don't you compromise, Barry? Work with us. The people are not knocking our doors down about this problem. You're the only person that's come to the village board, so it doesn't... I don't perceive it as a... I mean, a problem all over the village. You know, it's just... You're the only person that's come here and brought this up.
I don't know why.
That's true.
I guess I'm just... I just don't like to pay something for nothing.
Well, spend, uh... Bob says five hundred dollars, forty times twelve, that's four hundred and eighty. Or a hundred and fifty. So you're going to save... Why would you not spend a hundred and fifty to save five hundred a year? I mean, do the math.
Monetarily.
You're good at math.
But why would I... Why should I have to?
Well, conforms to the village code if you do.
But I'm being reasonable if I don't, aren't I?
No, I don't think so.
You think so?
I think it's simply a matter of what the village code says, Barry. If the village code says something different, that's what we'd all have to live with.
What do you think, sir?
That's all I have, you know?
Village code...
What do you think, man?
Wait a minute. Wait a minute, Barry. Let me explain something. Village code is not a dream that the village board has. It is drafted by an attorney and the laws are checked out to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And that's the way it is. That's why the village codes could... That's why we have this codes, to try to keep everybody on straight and everything.
Let me ask you this. Do you think you're doing the right thing by me? By me or anybody else in my situation?
I have never been into that situation, so I can't answer.
Would you like to pay eighty-five dollars for one water?
I'll tell you what. It wouldn't take me long to let you hear.
Yeah? What about you, man?
It would not take me long.
I think you're going to have to make a change to get us to change our position. I think you're going to have to make a change.
You're asking us to open a big can of water. I mean, a big... Because then people are going to be flocking in here. Oh, he gets a change, we want a change. You compromise...
It's the right thing to do.
Barry, you compromise and spend a hundred and fifty dollars to save forty times twelve, four hundred and eighty dollars. You compromise, we'll probably compromise.
I think it's the right...
Whoa, wait a minute. There would be no compromising. None.
We don't have to compromise. He's the code at that point.
He gets... You're putting, you know, that into a apartment out.
It's what according to code.
Is that reasonable to ask you to do that?
No, it is not.
Well, then it's not reasonable for us, I think.
Why isn't it? Am I wrong? Is it not the right thing to do?
It is the right thing to do.